All right, thank you. Clerk Seeger, can you please take roll call?
Borninski.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Seeger is present. Treasurer Slavens is at the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association today. Snyderman.
Hello, everyone.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. First item is a general calendar. Consider appeal of FOIA 24-371. All right, so on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024, the Supervisor's Office received a FOIA appeal from T. Tro Anderson. The appeal is in regards to the partial denial of FOIA request 24-371. This request is for the Board to consider the appeal to the partial denial issued on April 19, 2024. Clerk Seeger, do you want to add to that?
No, everything is in the packet for the Board. Read. My office. You know, the deputy clerk acts as FOIA coordinator. And we rely on departments to provide us with documents. When they've indicated that they've satisfied a FOIA, they, you know, we accept that kind of at face value. There's a very detailed appeal indicating a document that the individual would like. It is in the clerk's office and finance and also available on the township website. And providing it would be super simple and cost nothing to the township.
Any questions or discussion?
So yeah, if these documents are already available for the public, then I think it shouldn't be a problem to provide them to Mr. T. Tro Anderson. These are not confidential documents, right?
Your mic on? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh.
Talk directly into the mic.
These are, as Kate mentioned, these are like public documents, right? People can, people, if people need, it's not confidential.
Correct.
I mean, the FOIA request was a little bit involved and maybe pointed, but there was a specific request for like, looks like eight budget accounts. And those would be transportation costs for the Supervisor's Office, maintenance charges for vehicle to the Supervisor's Office, charges fuel cost to the Supervisor's Office. Same for the clerk's office and the same for the Treasurer's Office for the periods. I don't have that term, but it was essentially for 2016 or 2017 to 2021. That was the request. Those accounts weren't necessarily provided. One was, the requestor responded with their appeal that essentially they wanted specific pages out of a budget book that had those accounts on it. So very detailed, very specific. Providing those pages that are currently on our website. And that's a public document, right? By law, I have to have a copy of that budget book at my front counter. Anybody can come in and look at it. They just want a digital image of that. Like I said, yeah. Right now, pull the three pages that have been requested and send them to the requesting
So they've already received some documentation to fulfill their requests and this would just complete it?
Yeah, in your packet, you can, you can see provided was like a journal of accounts solely for the maintenance fuel costs just for the Supervisor's Office. That was like one. That was essentially seven pages. Tie out to what is in the budget, so that's good. Actuals, it's $4,562.92 over that four-year period. The question, that question was not satisfied with just that one account. All three accounts. And they had indicated that they were satisfied with the actuals that are in the budget.
Okay.
They didn't necessarily need the detail. Accounting software.
Seems reasonable to me.
So the documents that were provided to him were for the Supervisor's Office, but he did not receive a report for the clerk and treasurer for that time period. And so now what we're doing is giving him that information because there's something in the budget document that may pertain to that.
Could, those records don't exist because neither the clerk nor the Treasurer's Office have a pool of vehicle. So there are no fuel costs.
Right, okay.
There would be no fuel costs during that four-year period.
Okay. So only the Supervisor had fuel reimbursed?
During that four-year period, that is correct. That we have a record for.
Okay.
I will move to hand the appeal in form.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, the next item on the agenda, I have to, I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda is Civic Plus Agenda and Meeting Management Select Tool Demo Discussion. And we're going to be introduced and led by Director Victor Abegbu.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. With me tonight, I have our colleagues from Civic Plus. They are online and while we work to promote them. Civic Plus, as you know, is a platform that offers the township quite a lot of things. Different modules based on the business that we conduct here in Canton Township. There's a model that they have called Civic Clerk or Civic Select, as the name is being changed. What it does is to help us the way we manage board meetings, board packets, and the way we manage approvals as well. So we've been discussing this in IT department as a possible solution for settings like this, how we conduct business. And so want to make sure that everybody sees the process and takes a look at it and tell us what you feel like, what you feel about it. And at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Ryan. I know Ryan, you're there.
Yes, sir, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. So if you can share your screen and walk us through particularly for the board process, what it looks like with Civic Select.
Certainly. And kudos to you, Victor. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you big credit for remembering the old name and then the new name. So our marketing team would give you a gold star for that, for sure, because I struggle with it from time to time itself. All right, I'm going to share my screen just briefly. So I also have a colleague that has joined me. So just wanted to take a really quick moment to introduce ourselves. Again, thank you to the Board of Trustees and all the township staff for having us here tonight and just allowing us to talk about Civic Clerk, as Victor had mentioned. I am Ryan Cram, your dedicated enterprise account manager. I have the distinct pleasure of working with all of the township staff on anything related to Civic Plus. So whether that be your recreation management solution, whether that be your website, whether that be your online codification and all of the other solutions that we work together with, I am one voice for Civic Plus. So also like my colleague Rochelle to introduce herself very briefly.
Thank you, Ryan. Hello, I'm Rochelle Cantaro, Solutions Engineer here at Civic Plus. And prior to coming over here at Civic Plus, I served in local government for 17 years. Several of those years as a deputy town clerk managing agendas and packets for elected officials. So I'm excited to show you what this looks like for the Board.
Thank you, Rochelle. And so just put together just a super easy, brief agenda to kind of show you what we've been chatting about tonight. So first and foremost, as Victor mentioned, really want to kind of digest and jump into an example of the Board Portal. So that's going to give you a great picture of how you could interact, what you'll see during a meeting, what you can expect, how you can view your agenda, how you can vote. We want this to be very interactive in nature. So if you have a question, feel free to ask us. We also know that Canton strives to be a second, you know, second to none, best-in-class community for the residents. So want to also show you the resident portal. So that's going to give a great depiction of what it looks like for Ryan Cram, if he was a resident. Unfortunately, I'm not of Canton, to really interact with the public portal. View agendas and meetings, watch a live meeting, view bookmarks on a recorded meeting, et cetera. And then, of course, want to open it up for any questions that any of the trustee members might have. And then just really quick here, if you're looking at this full graphic, this is what we call the civic experience. And the civic experience is what we have identified in Civic Plus, the three pillars of local government. So you're governing, you're serving, you're operating. And then we built an entire portfolio of products around that. It really helps to create a balance between those three pillars, but also provide a personalized, one-stop, kind of frictionless experience for residents to interact with their local government. So today, we're going to be kind of talking over here in the governing aspect. So as Victor had mentioned, Civic Clerk, or what it's known today as Agenda and Meeting Management Select, and all of the integrations that we've really created. Because our goal is to have solutions that integrate with one another. So you don't have a siloed experience, not only for staff, but also for residents, to really create those efficiencies kind of in your day-to-day operation. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to my colleague Rochelle, who's going to walk us through some of those aspects that we just talked about on the agenda.
Thanks so much, Ryan. I'll go ahead and start sharing my screen here. And can I just get confirmation that everybody can see my demo site? It's just a mock agenda of a Board of Trustees meeting?
We can see it, thanks.
We can.
Perfect. So in a couple of demos, just a couple of months ago, Ryan and I showed township staff on how staff can create agendas within the system, create items, upload all of the supporting documents within Civic Clerk as well. Once all of those documents have been approved and reviewed by the proper township staff, then the agenda and packet is ready to go forward facing. Right here, what you're seeing now is the Board Portal. And that is how you trustees will be accessing meeting materials via Civic Clerk. So as soon as township staff makes agendas available for you, you're just going to sign into your Board Portal. And this is an electronic version of your agenda. So pretty short meeting for our mock meeting today. And you can go into any agenda item. So let's take a look at this one, the Civic Plus Select item. And you can take a look and review any of the supporting documents staff makes available to you. So let's take a look at that RBA. And this is just what it looks like in my demo site here. As you can see, within the Board Portal, you will be able to make annotations and also add extra notes by implementing a text box straight onto any supporting document. Again, you can just look at any supporting documents staff has made available to you directly from the Board Portal. Sorry, I'm not sure why that's not populating right now. And within the Board Portal, you're also able to make notes right here within the notes box. It's marked private because you can't see each other's notes. Trustees cannot contact each other using the Board Portal. Subject to FOIA, just went through a FOIA item just right before this. I clerked in the state of Illinois. In Illinois, this absolutely would be considered a public record. So subject to FOIA because a resident or a member of the public would be able to ask for these notes. I just want to pause for a second. Does anybody have any questions about accessing and reviewing meeting materials using the Board Portal?
Go ahead, Kate.
Hi Rochelle, I was wondering, when you make a note, is that able to be accessed by, or not the note, the question? So on that RBA, you showed us, there was a Ask Victor a Question box.
Yeah.
Would Victor be able to see that ahead of time? Or would that be something where, like, say I was doing it, I would then ask that question during a board meeting?
This note is specifically for you. Township staff cannot see this. So Victor would not be able to have seen this prior to the meeting. This note is strictly for you.
Okay, thank you.
Also, if you can go back into the action item.
Yeah, of course.
Or any of them. So sometimes we have quite a few supporting documents, especially if it's for like a subdivision approval with diagrams and such. Is there a way, do you have to eat, open each of them individually? Or is there a way to open them all and scroll through them?
In this view right here, you do have to open them up individually. However, if you do like, like that cohesive packet look, there is this packet option right here. And that will generate like a one big document for you. So if you did want to scroll up and down, you can do that within the system as well.
Any chance?
Annotation capability is available for you in this view as well. So you can make annotations like this.
Any chance that this would have an index or anything for each item? Or it's just scrolling till you get to the next item?
It is a scroll at this time, at this point in time, it is just a scroll.
All right, thank you.
Of course. Within the Board Portal, you, we have some great live meeting capabilities available to you. So before a meeting, you can come into your Board Portal, examine all of the meeting documents made available to you by township staff. During a meeting, in your Board Portal, you're also able to roll yourself in during a meeting. So during a meeting, you can join a meeting and mark yourselves president voting, president not voting, whatever the case may be, and hit save. And again, you will have your agenda available for you here. Running in the background as minutes taker, Civic Plus Select also has a minutes-taking module. So your minutes taker during a meeting is controlling the meeting live and also keeping you updated of how we are progressing through today's meeting. So a couple of views that I'm going to switch back and forth during this part of the demonstration. This is Board Portal. This is what you would be looking at during the meeting. This is public display. So you can have this displaying at one of your monitors in chambers so that your in-person audience or your viewing audience can also be kept updated of how we're progressing through the meeting. And these views are controlled by your minutes taker. So to show you what I mean. So let's say it's time for this meeting to be called to order. And your minutes taker is setting that item as the current item. Right here in the Board Portal, right at the very bottom, is your update bar. That update bar is very, very important. We know that during a meeting, order of business changes. So your minutes taker is going to keep you updated via this update bar. So if things get kind of hectic during a meeting, don't fret. Just look at that update bar at the bottom. And Township Clerk will be keeping you up to date as we're progressing through the meeting. Also, for your in-person audience, you also have this, keeping them updated as we're going through the meeting. So let's say it's now time to call roll. That view changes as we set that item as the current item. So we're just following along the agenda. But again, like I said, order of business changes sometimes. Let's go straight to that Civic Plus item and let's set that to current. And for you as trustees, right here, you're updated in your Board Portal. Your public is also updated within the Board Portal. So within Civic Plus Select, you can welcome speaker. Let's say you're going to have Ryan give a very short presentation on Civic Plus Select, but you're, you're going to time him. He's got two minutes to make his case. It's okay, he's a, he's a very effective speaker, so he's good with two minutes. So once your minutes taker has started the speaker timer, trustees for you, you've got your speaker timer right here in the Board Portal. So let's say Ryan is making statements, is making some really, really good points, but you want to go back to those supporting documents. All you need to do is click on this details button. And you'll be forwarded straight to that item. You can examine all of those previous supporting documents that was made available to you. And of course, you can review all of the notes that you've made for yourself. For the public, there's speaker timer right here in that public display. So Ryan knows how much speaking time he has. Once this dip belows, once this dips below 30 seconds, it does turn red. And hopefully, that will signal him to go ahead and wrap up his comments. But as minutes taker, I can end his speaking time early. Within your Board Portal, you also have the ability to vote electronically. So let me show you what that looks like. So we would have marked who initiated and who seconded this vote, this motion. And let's start that voting process. And within your voting, within your Board Portal, your voting prompt will appear and you'll make a choice, yes, no, or abstain. Again, Ryan made some really, really great points. Voting yes. Alternatively, your minutes taker can take votes by roll call, voice vote, and just marking along in the minutes module available within Civic Plus Select. We're going to mark that vote as passed or failed. For your public, you can have something like this appear so that your public knows in real time how their elected officials voted on a particular item. So we would just go through the agenda all the way, all the way until adjournment. And once we adjourn the meeting, you can go ahead and leave that meeting. And your notes, your agendas will remain in your Board Portal as long as township staff doesn't unpublish them. Are there any comments, questions, concerns about navigating your Board Portal during a meeting?
No.
Perfect. I wanted to also show you how this all comes together for the public. Because Civic Plus Select does have a public portal. Right now, the township is using your website's Agenda Center to display all of your meeting materials. So that would be replaced by Civic Plus Select's public portal. And this is an example. We're over here at the Township of MacCombs Public Portal. They have a page dedicated to agendas, minutes, and videos. And they have their public portal embedded into that webpage. And I would suggest the same for the township. As a member of the public, I can go to your website and explore all of the meeting materials available to me. I can filter to specific meeting bodies if I want to. I can also search by keywords. I can filter down to specific meeting dates if I want to. I can scroll up and down to look for meeting materials. And once I find a meeting that interests me, I'll go ahead and click on it. As a member of the public, I'm able to view your agenda in HTML. This is a service to your ADA audience. If I am navigating through this public portal using a screen reader, I'm going to do that quickly and effectively in HTML. Another option for the township, you let us know if you like this. We can have motions and votes available to your public in real time, even before your minutes are approved. Kind of looks like this. Within the public portal, we can also store your video. Should you, should you want to go with our Civic Plus Media solution? And as you can see with MacCombs Township, they're also utilizing our public displays right here. They have two monitors in their chambers to display those voting results. In the public portal, as I navigate through the public portal, I can have that video follow me around with the ability to resize. Those bookmarks also follow me around. And I can just close out of the video if I want to as well. I can take a look at the agenda, packet, minutes, whatever meeting materials you make available to me. I can take a look at that in my favorite browser. I also have the ability to download it in PDF in plain text. The plain text is there for your ADA audience. If I'm navigating through this document using a screen reader, I'm going to do that quickly and effectively in plain text. Have the packet, minutes, of course, all of the supporting documents available. available to me for viewing and also for download. A feature of the public portal, if I want to, if I choose to, as a member of the public, I can sign up for an account. Signing for an account means I can be notified. Let's say if the Board of Trustees is having a meeting and their agenda and packet is ready for viewing, I can be notified of that publication. I can also sign in. And then, in the public portal, I can email meeting documents, meeting information to my friends and family straight from the public portal. Again, this is just an extra benefit for your residents, members of the public that might want to sign up for an account, but they do not need to sign up for an account to view all of your meeting materials. So this is the new way that the public will be accessing your meeting materials instead of Agenda Center. Any comments, questions, concerns of how this comes together for the public?
Hi, Rochelle. So this is all in real time as you? All happening in real time?
There are, there's some functionality that can absolutely happen in real time. For example, the publication of these motions and votes can happen in real time. Other, other actions like reviewing your meeting materials, all of your supporting documents, that can happen pre-meeting. Township staff can make those packets, those meeting materials available to you before a meeting, and you can review those during a meeting. You can, you can take notes prior to a meeting, during a meeting, or after. Did I fully answer that question?
Question for you and maybe for you, Victor, as well. We also have two monitors in our chamber here. And at times, some of our directors will display things that they're discussing. So I'm assuming you can, an individual can take control separate from the clerk and what is normally displayed for the public using this tool and bring up another document, you know, a diagram or a map or a chart or PowerPoint, whatever. Is that true? Have you thought about it and worked that out?
Rochelle, you want to take on that?
Yeah, we absolutely have municipalities that have one monitor that will display this information here. And then they have another monitor that might display their presentations. So both of your monitors don't have to be taken up by this information here. That's just how the Township of Macomb decided to utilize their resources. But absolutely, you have the freedom to display whatever you want in whichever monitor you want.
Now, could you also speak to situations where somebody else is making a presentation like he talked about, but you still want to pipe everything through the portal as opposed to going outside? Because right now, we are bringing you in through our Zoom platform. And, and you know, if if we go this way, that means we're gonna have to be pushing our meeting through the, through the mechanism that Civic Plus is or Civic Select is going to give us. Would there then be situations where the presenter is coming in from a different, a different way? And then you bring everything together?
So Victor, I, I wanna, I wanna make sure that I'm, I'm clear on, on the question. Are you, do you still want to enable your presenter to like share a screen like I'm doing right now?
That's correct.
So you would still need Zoom for that functionality. Our Civic Plus Media solution is just for live streaming and on-demand video hosting. We don't currently have the functionality to present like the way Zoom lets you present now, nor do we have the ability to allow attendees to like raise their hand and comment. You would still need a, a true online conferencing platform like Zoom to accomplish that. But we do have a great integration with Zoom. So you can, we can work with both platforms. You, you can work with Civic Plus Media and Zoom at the same time if you wish.
So Victor, that, that integration is gonna be able, it's gonna allow you to start the meeting simultaneously. So it's a direct integration Zoom into CP Media. So you're not gonna have to run two different meetings, two different software, two different streaming versions at the same time. It's directly integrated into it.
Okay, we'll make sure that, that integration is streamlined.
Yeah, yeah, we can talk a little bit more about that. But like as, as Ryan says, you can, within Civic Plus Select, start that live stream straight from the minutes taking module or from our events module.
Yeah, thank you.
Chris? I will go ahead and stop my share. Go ahead, Ryan.
Hey Rochelle, I was just gonna say, just a thirty-second overview, if you would. I was gonna have you just show the trustees how, if I was a resident and I accessed the portal, how I could utilize a bookmarking feature. Say I wasn't able to attend live, but I really had a agenda item that I wanted to watch, and I didn't want to just drag the scroll bar and try to find where the item was. I could just click on a specific item that was pertinent to me and go right to it.
Yes, absolutely. So again, going back to the Township of Macomb, again, they're utilizing our, our full suite here. And they're, they, they do our live streaming with us and on-demand video hosting. So with our Civic Plus Media solution, you're also able to bookmark your videos just like this. And what's great about this is, as a member of the public, I'm looking at this meeting, but I do not want to sit through these parts of the meeting. I want to go straight to this higher item. I'm just gonna click on that bookmark and that video will be forwarded straight to that spot. The bookmarks also appear on the scroll bar, so I can just click on that as well to help me navigate through that video. So the, the beauty of the bookmark, one, I don't have to scroll up and down to get that right spot in the meeting. And two, the bookmarks are also searchable via our search bar in the public portal as well.
Thank you.
Of course, of course. I'll go ahead and, and stop my share and welcome any other comments, questions, concerns that you may have about the Civic Plus Select solution, especially how you might interact with it as, as elected officials, as trustees.
So on the front end, just to let everybody know, the people preparing the packets is actually a great tool for them. You know, they've already gone through the demo and they really like it, how they can pull things together. Comments?
More of a comment, not a question. I really like the real-time transparency. I'm always in favor of finding ways to make our board meetings more accessible to people who are not able to attend. I like the bookmarking function. I like the search function. Because a lot of times, even for myself, when I'm trying to look up something that happened at a past meeting, like I don't really remember what meeting it happened at, but the search function, I think, will be really helpful for board members, staff, and the public. So just wanted to.
Good point. Anyone else?
Hi, this is Clerk Seagrist. And my, my question is with regard to the minutes and like the board packet itself, from a storage standpoint, this is all retained on a cloud server, is that correct?
That's correct. We, we will offer you unlimited storage with Civic Plus Select. And all of your documents and data are stored in Microsoft Azure.
Okay, I'm in my head, just kind of going through all of the relevant, like, retention schedules and statutes and thinking about internal clerks' processes that will be modified as a result. That's, this is, that's really helpful. It was like, those are my only kind of two questions.
I, I hear you. I remember former clerk here. So I absolutely understand the need for data retention. And, and we, we don't auto delete any data. If, if there are any documents that should be deleted or need to be deleted per your retention policies, you can reach our, reach out to our support team to help you with that, or you can do that yourself.
Oh, thank you.
And if I may ask, Rochelle, so not only are any of the associated meeting documents, minutes, et cetera, cloud hosted, of course, and unlimited in storage, also goes the same for the videos. So all of the videos are retained in an unlimited format, so you can house as many videos with as many boards as, you know, dictated by your needs.
Thank you. I could. I think this is well past due for organization that functions at the level that we do. Use similar agenda management.
I'm, I'm sorry, clerk, I'm, I'm missing some of your comments.
Oh, okay. I was just talking about how I use similar agenda management systems for some of the nonprofit boards that I'm on. And those organizations are not as high-functioning as we are or involved in as much stuff as we are. And so I think this, this kind of multi-technology and multi-process system that we currently have for how we put on the production of the board meeting, to see something like this as comprehensive, as effective, as sustainable, all of the other things that trustee Foster talked about being beneficial. Not to mention just the increase in productivity with staff time. I, I can only think about how much time, I know how much time we spend doing redundant, redundant tasks that would be streamlined because of something like this.
Anyone else? Kate? Probably speak closer to it. Or pull it up to you, that's easier.
Hello?
There we go.
Okay. So I agree with what Summer said. I, I like all of those things about this. But when Stephen brought up, you know, having documents all linked together in a, something where we could scroll through, but not having that bookmarked is gonna be an issue. I mean, I, I want to be able to easily find things, but I don't want to have to switch screens all the time when I'm trying to look at different supporting documents.
If it's in Microsoft 365, you should be able to set that up easily though, also, right, Victor?
So in the, in the presentation, it gave you an option to go to the one packet, right? And, and that one packet doesn't seem like it's fully indexed on the left where you can quickly jump.
Exactly.
While I'm thinking this out, right? While you have the option to quickly download that as a PDF and then do all that you want to do it, but it will be then outside of the portal, which will really want you to conduct business inside of the portal.
Right.
All right, and that, you know, or you can.
And then it doesn't solve the switching between screens.
And it doesn't solve the problem that, or you stay within, you know, maybe you, you know, again, it will be a little bit of dual task, meaning you, you know where it is, and then you quickly jump to the other side where you, you're able to mark it up and do all that you need to do inside of it. But again, it would mean jumping from one to the other.
Yeah, I, I personally, I find that difficult to do while also trying to pay attention to the meeting, which I think I should be doing.
It should be, I, I want to make sure I call this out. Rochelle and Ryan can chime in as well. There's quite a lot that we're gonna discover if we go this way during the training. I mean, it's not, we're not doing it a good service by, you know, doing the thirty-minute demo. But the demo is basically to tell you what's possible, right? And so during the training, after implementation, then we can be able to dive into it to see. And I'm sure that we will find a better way of navigating and getting to, you know, that particular ease of use and be able to get our minds settled. Because again, you're right, during the meeting, it, it's really not time for you to be experiencing any kind of frustration while you're following a, a particular meeting.
Um, and of course, for me, and I'm sure other board members, wondering about the cost. I'm not really quite sure what prompted bringing this to us. So I am wondering about costs.
Well, I think the easy use, if you ever come up to the supervisor's office when they're putting together board packets and putting together PDFs, it can take hours, hours and hours, and it crashes a lot. That's a lot, a big part of it also, is the ease of use on all sides and also for everybody to put the packets together. And you can edit them easier. So on the other side of it, it's, it's a lot more ease of use also, more efficiency for the staff.
Okay. But still wondering about the cost?
Civic Plus has presented a proposal to us, which we're walking through the RB to present that. There's a particular incentive in it at the moment for us to do this. However, speaking about the question that you asked, what prompted this? We know definitely that time and, and how they say, time and material is always a consideration in, in things. Timing of staff putting the board package, don't get me wrong, they do excellent job in making it work as is. But if you only know what that work requires to get it, make it look seamless, that staff could actually be productive in so many other things with a tool like this. And so when you get to know that, and then when you're going to see the cost of transitioning to something like this, then you realize that, you know, it, it's really worth it. I'm not sure if, you know, this is the right setting to divulge what the cost that they've given to me. I mean.
So are you still negotiating?
Well, because, yeah, we're still negotiating that, so.
I remember in 2017, sitting through a demo with the supervisor's office at that time, looking at this software solution and choosing not to move forward at that time, primarily because of the cost. And in retrospect, it was, was not a substantial amount of money. And, and when I look back now at six years later, I'm kind of reminded of like this, the Greek myth of Sisyphus. This man being punished by the gods and he has to rule this. This man being punished by the gods and he has to rule this boulder over him. The French philosopher Camus says that you can transcend your suffering by falling in love with the boulder. Punishment, which is to roll this boulder up the hill every single day. When it gets halfway up, it rolls back down. He transcends his daily suffering by falling in love with the boulder. And now the act of pushing the boulder up the hill is an act of love. That's great. And then the day comes where you no longer have to push the boulder up the hill, but you've fallen in love with the act of pushing the boulder. And so in government, I always wonder, and I look at my office and I say, where have we fallen in love with pushing the boulder up the hill? This 500-pound boulder that we are attached to, that we may not have to remain attached to. One of those boards that I was talking about, the executive assistant to the CEO would spend three days pulling together the board packet. I can tell you doing minutes is a day's task for my executive, for my assistant. In this scenario, the minutes would be done before the first board member gets up to the chair. I was not involved in bringing this forward by IT. And I did not request this. I have been secretly wanting this for six years, primarily because of the fact that we have fallen in love with the boulder. At some point, if we keep using PDFs, which routinely crash in the middle of the board meeting, or the clerk who's responsible for taking the minutes and voting, trying to navigate and switch screens between three different programs during the board meeting, that in and of itself is extremely challenging. Now, I don't mind doing that because that's, I guess, a role and I could take that role back in. Something like this would streamline the use of three screens into one. And then I think about the actual compiling of an RBA. We have an entire policy dedicated to ordinances and we have an entire policy dedicated to the conduct of the meeting and an entire policy dedicated to RBA construction, solely because of how we do them inside Adobe. Also, the need to, in those processes, make sure that they are ADA compatible. I will tell you, there has got to be the loss of 110 hours a week of productivity in this organization solely dedicated to using the tools that we currently have. Favor of this program is those hours would be dedicated towards things that are valuable to the residents as opposed to building a 600-page packet in a PDF document that crashes multiple times on the clerk while he's trying to take the minutes. Yeah, and that's a whole part that I can't speak to.
Thanks, Anne Marie. What I love about this board is you can come to a board meeting and a Philosophy 101 class could break out in the middle of it, so, and I'm admiring it, so. I think Civic Plus is probably going to start putting that in their advertising too, I think.
Don't fall in love with the boulder.
Yeah, don't fall in love with the boulder.
It's the easiest thing to do.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it. Of course, we have to go through the pricing and everything, the budgeting. And I just asked the question about the packet just because, you know, I know that some of us, you know, all of us need that function. But I'm not saying that I wouldn't go back to the indexing function, the agenda function, and read those things that way. I'd have to try it. I don't know. So I'm assuming that we're going to, in our training, take our live packet and put it through this process so we can see what it looks like and how it looks and feel for us and for planning, I guess, if we're going to use it for the planning commission. My bigger concern would be for the residents and what it takes for them to use it. I saw the demo, but then also we said we'd still be using Zoom. So it's confusing to me whether they're going to have to log into both Zoom and Civic Plus to watch our meetings now and how that would work. And I guess that's part of what I'd like to see in the demo. And then lastly, Victor, I don't know if you can say words on this. I'm sure you don't have a chart on it, but you showed us your overall vision and architecture for applications in the township. And I think I remember this being in there.
Yes.
And it falls under one part of it.
Yes.
And I would just, if you can email us like that and just with an arrow that says this is where this kind of falls in.
Okay.
And that.
Will do.
But yeah, looks like it'll be real useful.
Did you want us to address the Zoom versus Civic Plus media?
Sure.
If you have a resident or a member of the public that would care to offer a comment during a public meeting, we would still suggest that you keep that Zoom option open. So if I'm a member of the public, I would like to come and speak at a Board of Trustees meeting. I would opt to choose to join via Zoom because I want to be able to make my comments known. The Civic Plus media option, watching that in the board portal, would be if I just want to view it. I just want to watch the video. I want to watch it live. But I'm not going to be offering any comments. I just want to watch it. I'm just a viewer. So very similarly to my experience for this meeting today, Ryan and I entered the meeting as like attendees, right? Like we were just watching. But, you know, we were able to raise our hands if we wanted to. But then we were also given control to share our screens. So that's Zoom. So if I'm just a member of the public, I just want to watch the meeting. I want to observe what happens. I'm not going to be presenting anything. I'm not going to be offering any comments. I'm going to be watching that through your public portal. And they don't have to sign into anything. They're just going to go to your website and view that meeting.
Okay. I guess we'll have to be explicit about that on our website as to the options they have to watch the meeting and the capabilities of each.
Want to say anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what everyone else is saying about, give a lot of transparency to our township residents if they want to join the meeting and see what's going on. And it probably will take a little bit of training for us to navigate through it and getting used to it. And I'm sure in the future, there might be an option where bookmarks are available. I'm sure because in the world of IT development, things are constantly improving. Are not improving going bad. But I'm really hoping it does. And yeah, I like how, you know, you can see, you can do the votes and things like that. And people can see, especially the actual minute, the actual meeting, people can go and, you know, go through the bookmarks and see what the people talked about. That, I think, is a very useful tool that the residents can use. How, what was discussed, how it was voted, things like that. And of course, it will help a lot of hours for our township employees. And that, I think, sometimes we, in the working world, we spend a lot of time doing meaningless work. So I think this is a good thing.
A couple of years ago, they tried to build the board packet using SharePoint and they came up with a process, but it was still too cumbersome. So this is like, we've been always looking for processes to improve inside.
Anything else?
You are absolutely right. And I want to thank the board members for being open-minded about, you know, this, what I call, process improvement, right? And in this case, really internally, if you look at the processes that are involved in, you know, putting this show together, it's a little bit cumbersome. And, you know, it's time that we bring it forward to the 21st century. The other thing that we need to touch on as we discuss in this is also the aspect of security. Security remains paramount in all things that we do. As it relates to the operation of the board, security remains paramount. And, you know, in going this way, we are guaranteeing that, you know, the right security will be in place. I think somebody had asked a question. He asked the question whether Victor is able to see your notes. No, I will not. Victor does have some powers, but this one is not one of those. And I will not. And so these are part of the things that we do consider, particularly coming from IT and also in the world that we live in today. It's one of those things that we also consider in making these kind of decisions.
Anyone else? Thank you for the presentation. Thank you very much, Rochelle and Ryan. We appreciate you coming.
Yes, thank you for everyone's time tonight. Greatly appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys and thank you guys so much for the feedback.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the study session for the United States Army Corps of Engineers' Scope of Work Proposal. Just as we know how a lot of this started, was back in August, we had some flooding in Canton Township and all over the region. And I'm going to just promote Catherine to panelist here. And so we were at an event and Debbie, Senator Debbie Stabenow's office came up to us and said, a lot of your constituents are calling about the flooding and we just want to recommend that you start talking to the Army Corps of Engineers and see, you know, what, how they can help you. As you all know, you know, we're part of a regional water system. And so we don't have a wall around us. So whatever we do affects people downstream and upstream. So we're just right now looking for how we can help our residents in Canton Township and make recommendations to the county, to the residents, and to the state about what we need to do to move forward to maybe mitigate some of what had happened in August and actually in some areas in January. So Dave, if you want to start, just kind of talk about where we've gone from there, including the survey that Emma took and what we learned from the residents there also.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Yes, so as you all know, flooding is an issue in the township and it's going to continue to be a flooding, an issue as we go forward. The 100-year flood, 100-year rain seems to be happening every other year or so. Certainly, the things we saw last summer were devastating in parts of the township. And also this past January, we saw some things happen in the southwest part of the township that should have happened, those things that by near Grandview of Geddes Road and Par Road. So it was great that the supervisor brought to us a relationship with the Army Corps of Engineers. And they're here, they're going to talk more because they're experts on this. But this isn't the only thing we're doing. We are working on more short-term and midterm-type projects that we'll be reporting back to you about those things too. But certainly shout out to Emma for doing the survey work. She was being very humble about it, but it was done very well. We just need, we needed feedback and she was able to put it together in some type of useful format that we could actually apply. And we shared that with the team from the Army Corps. So I'm going to turn it over to them to kind of walk through some of the things that they're doing. And then if it's something you guys, we should do, that the board wants to pursue, we're going to be bringing forward some things in RBA to take our next steps.
It does not let, I mean, people have asked, it does let the county off the hook and it doesn't. I mean, they're still part of this process, yeah.
No, absolutely not. It doesn't. But it's, as Supervisor Graham Hude mentioned, it is, it's going to include a lot of communities. It's a watershed.
Yes.
As many of you know, I'm on the Board of Directors of Friends of the Rouge. And it is, we need to take a watershed approach to these things. But we start here in Canton with our challenges. Certainly, make whatever changes we can do to whatever agencies we need to involve, this will help us get there, along with some other things that we want to do too.
Also, as Dave said, he is on the board of the Friends of the Rouge and he has a lot of experience with this. He's even been in with his waiters clearing log jams. So he understands this river and these waterways very well.
I'm sort of passionate about the Rouge.
Yes, all the way down through Dearborn.
Yeah. Go ahead, Greg.
I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Greg Mousoff. I'm a hydraulic engineer with the Army Corps of Detroit District. I'm the Planning Assistance to States Coordinator for the district. So we do planning assistance.
Might be easier for you, sorry, just to let you know, these microphones, you have to be like, you want to pull it around and almost put it in your face.
There we go. Now I'm on. Okay. Thanks, everyone. Yeah, my name's Catherine Labune. I'm a hydraulic engineer here in our Detroit District. I apologize for my voice. Don't fly to California. Apparently, that's how I get sick. As Supervisor mentioned, you know, while we're here, you know, you guys have had a lot of flooding and specifically that last August flood. I actually found this from, you know, the National Weather Service where they had actually noted, you know, a three-to-five-inch range in a six-hour period. That's a really extreme event. Why you're really concerned about the flooding and everything. You're not alone. So I just want to take a few minutes. I apologize. Won't be, you know, technical, it's just... But I did want to at least to give you like an overview of what I'm talking about so you have a little bit of an idea. So we're going to be doing a hydrology model and a hydraulics model. Now, the hydrology model basically replicates the water cycle. So everyone remember like fifth grade, you know, water cycle. So it takes like how much rain falls, how much you're going to lose to the land, how much is going to be stored on the land, and then how much is actually going to like get to your rivers and streams. So this is sort of how it works. You know, this is, it's a model called HECS. It's built by the Corps. It's free to the public. As soon as we're done, y'all can take it and even add to it, have a consultant work on it. We estimate, you know, how much flow is going to get out to the river. And we get something called a hydrograph. Then we take that information and there's two ways we are looking at these. This is for a hydraulics model. We do both a one-dimensional and a two-dimensional. So for streams that are really urbanized, they tend to be just, you know, the water just flows in one direction. It might get over to the overbanks and, you know, flood a little bit, but it mostly just moves downstream. That is where we do a lot of, we have to survey all of the cross-sections. So we send a survey crew out to, you know, get cross-sections, get information about bridges. Because that's going to tell you how the water is moving downstream. And we take that hydrograph that we got from the other model and we put it into this model. And this model is called HECS. And I apologize, I'm probably talking really fast. But this is also a model constructed by the Corps, free to the public. Anyone can download it. You can take the modeling and, again, update it, add to it as time goes by. It's all free and available.
You also looked to see if there were any other models you could use as part of it.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to talk about that in a sec. But I did also want to mention now, HECS used to only be one-dimensional. They have now do two-dimensional modeling where you can see how water will move on a very flat location. Like say you have a lot of farm fields that are all connected without necessarily a big channel. You can see how the water will move. So this is an example of another project that I did out in the west side of the state where we were looking at a lot of, you know, flooding across flat areas. So the scope of work for this project that we've come up with is, we already have, and I apologize that colors are hard to do on aerial photos. The red is an already constructed model of the Rouge watershed that I actually built a number of years ago for a different project. So what I'm proposing to do is basically... So what I'm proposing to do is basically to, um, refine the model here in the watersheds that cover Canton Township and all of the, the little bits of the headwaters that are right outside of you guys. So you guys are lucky, you guys live almost in the headwaters of the, the sub-basins here. Makes it a lot easier to gauge, you know, like what's gonna happen upstream of you, 'cause we know a few things that are gonna happen and we can make some guesses as to what's gonna happen in the future. So forecasting kind of in the future, future development, it's very helpful when you guys are almost at the headwaters. So what that is gonna do is like capture the volume of water that we would expect to be entering the streams. And we're good, 'cause we've already got this constructed, which is, which is nice. A lot of times we don't have anything like this and we have to start from scratch. But also, we already have some constructed, um, HECS models done for FEMA a number of years ago for both Fellows Creek and Willow Creek. So those are the two streams we're going to start with, um, basically in the center of the township, because the yellow dots were some areas where we, where, um, you know, flooding was reported. So we tried to pick the areas where we, we hit the, the largest amount of flooding first to see what that's gonna tell us before we kind of expand it outwards. We are gonna collect a little bit of more survey data at the very upstream and at the very downstream of Fellows Creek. And these will be one-dimensional models mostly, unless it, unless we find out while we're doing this that water gets out and like travels between the streams, then we can put in a 2D component and look at how the water would be exchanged between the two if we see that happening. For sure, in the southwest corner of the township where, you know, there's not a lot of development, that's the picture on the right-hand side, where you guys have had a lot of like water sheeting over the land, that is gonna be a two-dimensional model. So we're gonna be able to see how the water is flowing, you know, between that development and in and out to the farm fields and then over, um, uh, I forget the name of the road. I think that's Gettys Road. Yeah, so that is what we're looking at right now in terms of the areas we're gonna focus on to start. And the goal is really to see, um, you know, are there any road crossings, culverts that are basically undersized, you know, that they're causing water to back up behind them and then it's coming out of the banks? So that can tell you, you know, next time you're going to do a project on a road or if, you know, you're having some issues repeatedly in one location, we can give you not, kind of an idea of, okay, well, if you have a six-foot culvert here, perhaps you wanna make it larger or, you know, the bridge opening maybe needs to be a little bit bigger. Next time you're going to do repair on this location, you might wanna consider making something bigger. So that's what we're looking at right now in terms of this project. So that's the, the very core's overview. If anyone has any questions?
Also, um, we, this also talks about the wastewater treatment facility. I mean, 'cause you're looking at Fellows Creek and at the head of that, so you wanna talk about that effect?
Yeah, when we look at like the increase in flow, we could see, you know, 'cause you know, a lot of them, along the edges just outside the township, it looked to be undeveloped. So we can do a run where, okay, if we were to assume all of that was developed into like residential homes, what increase in flow would we likely expect? And we can put in an increase in flow due to a point source like the power, the wastewater treatment plant that you guys are aware of.
Models would show if we had large rain and it flooded here, this is what would happen downstream?
Yes, yeah, and we can run a number of extreme rainfall events to see, you know, how that's gonna change the peak flows that you're seeing and how that will then also change the flood plains that you're seeing, at least in these locations.
Now, what is the timing of that also?
Um, it will depend slightly on when we can get the survey completed. That's gonna drive, that usually drives the, the schedule unfortunately. I don't know if that is something that you folks would wanna do as part of the, like an in-kind part of the job. That is very, that is something that a lot of communities do if they, if they're doing a PIS. A lot of them will do the survey, because it's a, it's usually like an easily separated piece of the work. And that's something, survey is usually something that communities are familiar with, but it doesn't have to be.
How long do surveys usually take?
Something like this, I would think not more than a couple weeks, maybe two months, depending on weather, when they can get out, and then getting all the data processed to give to us.
And then to build the model? We've gone over this, so I'm just trying to help you guys. So how long does a model take after the survey?
Modeling, I mean typically, these types of projects are about eighteen months. Yeah, about, about two years.
So from what I understand about kind of like the history of storm water management, up until like the Clean Water Act, the goal of a storm water system was to move as much water out of a given area as fast as possible, without any regard for where that water goes. Obviously, things have changed and a lot of the goal now is to slow water down, retain it, and detain it if possible. When you're looking at this and making, at the end of the day, when, in eighteen months, when you're making a series of recommendations, what are, what could we expect? You used one example of looking at culverts, looking at, um, bridges where there might need to be an expansion or an increase of capacity. To me, that sounds like an increase in the full, in the ability to move water through a given system. Are you also gonna be talking about potentially ways to keep storm water out of the storm drain and/or out of the creeks or county drains themselves? Is that gonna be a component of what you're looking at? Or is that something we would wanna go to a different organization for?
That was not something we ness, we scoped out. That is definitely something we do. I would say, given the level of development in Canton Township, uh, do you guys have any land available to build anything?
Under, we have a lot of ITC corridors, so there's, we would have to.
Yeah, so I mean, I'd be happy to, you know, look at a few options in terms of if you wanted to try to like store storm water someplace.
And the, one of the branches of the Fellows Creek, we just preserved a hundred and thirty-six square, uh, acres of land that will not be developed. That would be a fantastic place for a wetland project or a decently large detention or retention facility that could hold hundreds of gallons of water if possible.
We can, we can put in something like on a conceptual level and then see, you know, how much that could potentially hold and reduce the amount of flow that would get to like Fellows Creek itself. That's, that's possible.
Are you comfortable that the state standards ensure that no water gets pushed onto any other communities on development?
Standards are, so once we pass on, you know, our model, once we develop it, it's free for anybody who wants it. So all through the process, you know, to show what's gonna happen. It's the model that we pass on to the state to show the impact of the process.
Cool.
So it's a, from the first step of that, that whole process. There's gonna be a lot on our, in Southeast Asia. We do a trivia that's out, that's been used in studies, we access it, we're, we believe, uh, we don't know if Southeast Asia is gonna incorporate yet, or if that area is gonna include that, so it comes out this part. So there's, there's, uh, a lot of the companies, the pipe network, the smart city, the pipe network, uh, channel. It's, uh, it's an issue with Red Ron, there's several areas, so this model would be incorporated now.
Other communities also, correct? What, what communities are you doing around us?
Um, yeah, so, but like Greg said, I'm, I'm building a model right now from Combe County for the Clinton River, 'cause they're gonna, you know, they have that adjustable weir and they're, they're wanting to like adjust the weir to like manage floodwaters and sedimentations. So we're doing that. We did actually build a model of the lower part of the Rouge River for, um, for the EPA. And they're, they're using that to do all of their, their, they're doing some ecosystem habitat projects down there. They have a contractor that took our model and they're, they're updating it. So Clinton and the Rouge are the, oh, we're, well, we're working on Ecourse Creek as well. That project's coming up. I don't think we've done anything on the Huron River, but projects all up and down the, the eastern side. And then all over the state as well and over into, uh, the Dunes area. Did a lot, a number of, you talk about, um, you know, getting water out. We, Milwaukee, we did a lot of projects in Milwaukee of removing all of the concrete that they put in in the sixties to get the water out. So, yeah. Yeah, that we put in in like the sixties and, you know, we're taking it all out now. Red Ron's not, Red Ron's not concrete.
We have different.
Also, the big dam breaks there.
Yeah.
We gotta put your mic on.
Put your mics on.
Apologize for that. So Midland's case with flooding issue is, uh, uh, the one dam broke and knocked another dam out, so they had three.
Questions? Just, Diana, go ahead.
Um, so Henry, uh, initially you said something about a fifty-fifty issue? Okay, cost sharing. So you, you must have spoken to them and so I'm. As I understand, this current scope just will do the model, right?
Yeah, and it, I mean, they'll be able to help us. Like she said, we're cul, we're culverts need to be cleared and things like that. She'll be, go ahead, Catherine.
Yeah, it would really just be investigate the problem. And, but you know, if we see a location where the water's all backing up to a bridge, it's an obvious thing where you might wanna look at that bridge to see if you can, you know, increase it or that kind of thing. Yeah, so it's, it's finding some of the problem areas to start with and then, uh, you know.
Now, we also, also know, you know, where the problem areas are. We know where a lot of them are just by physical viewing. And then when, we also took a survey of our residents. How many responses did we get? We got two-hundred-and-twenty-two responses from residents, so we can see if there were any hotspots that we missed, you know, in people's backyards that we might not know where it was overflowing. So we have that data and that's where Catherine was saying that were, those were the yellow dots that she saw. But you're, you're right, the fifty-fifty, so the cost is basically three-hundred thousand dollars and they pay fifty percent and we pay fifty percent. The fifty percent that we pay could be us hiring another consultant to do other additional work like survey work or helping, you know, adjust some of the culverts, things like that. So, and we, we are looking for funds for that also, so that's what they mean by fifty-fifty. I don't know the cost of the GI study that you were talking about, I mean.
So the Midland PAS was?
They had a number of partners as well, like the Midland Business Alliance, I mean, the, uh, yeah. It wasn't just like the county or the city. There were a number of folks that kinda came together to help out with it.
As Dave said, this is not the only approach. You know, he's looking, David mentioned, if you wanna talk about some of the other things.
Yeah, so thi- this will certainly help us in forms long-term, but short-term, there's, there's two things we wanna do. One, short-term, long-term. Short-term is, uh, we've taken an educational approach to the ponds that are in all the HOAs. We wanna be, uh, not more aggressive, but we wanna be more, do some more things to make sure that all those ponds are functioning correctly, 'cause I think not all of them are.
Right.
'Cause there were some that didn't take any water during a flood, so we're concerned about that, certainly in around Grandview. So as a short-term, we wanna get those, make sure those are functioning as designed. The more midterm thing is working with Wayne County on the drains. We would like to collaborate with Wayne County on opening the drains up where there's debris, sediment, trees, whatever is blocking some of these drains. 'Cause certainly under Denton, some of you may go see Fall Creek under Denton, there's a lot of stuff there that shouldn't be there. Some of you know, I was helping a, a, a lady who lives in Pilgrim Hills with, uh, where Fellows Creek goes three times on her property. The culvert she has on her property are not open. As far north, that's, but it certainly, um, it impact, Pilgrim Hills was impacted. As some of you know, people had couches floating in their backyards on their houses.
Yeah.
So, so I think there's, there's a question about, speed is important, also slow, being slow is important. So I think you gotta be smart about where things go, um, and how it impacts existing homeowners. And I could see, but right now, I don't have any good thoughts about what it looks like, but there may be some land use decisions that we need to take. but there may be some land use decisions that we need to take, how we develop whatever's left, or looking forward. I'm very familiar with what Ann Arbor does with stormwater. I'm not suggesting we do those things, those have significant challenges that I don't think we're ready to take on at this point, but I think we do need to think about land use decisions with stormwater, non-point source stuff.
And with your experience also, I mean, I just, we've had a lot of residents, I've had a lot of residents in the past week ask me, you know, if the rains and that, should I be removing logs? I mean, like, all Wayne County, they don't come remove these logs that are in the culvert, should I get in? But as you all said, that could affect things downstream. So, how do you know what you can go in and pull out of the streams if you're seeing something blocked? We don't recommend everybody do this, the elderly gentleman I was talking to, I asked him not to do that, please, but if somebody does in their yard, what would they do?
I, well, certainly garbage and that kind of stuff, I think we should all take that out safely. But as far as trees and things, it can be very dangerous, so I, I have a lot of experience working on log jams, what do you, what do you reimagine on the Rouge, and it can, you can get hurt really, really fast.
Yeah.
If you don't know what you're doing, whether it's with equipment, or you're moving, the term widowmaker, those things that's lumberjack, you know, people in the timber industry deal with that all the time. It's unintended consequences of when you move something, it gets you in the backside of you, so I don't recommend most people, some people who have experience, and they probably do it regularly, and don't think twice about it, but I, I couldn't say as a township official recommending people do that.
Drains and stormwater. Sorry, but, so, the township has two decently sized joint projects we did with the Alliance of Rouge Communities. One is the Oxbow Project that's over by Flodin, where we intentionally created two oxbows to handle overflow of the county drain, spillage, to get water out of the creek to slow it down. And then we also worked with the Alliance of Rouge Communities at Warren and Sheldon, the Warren Wetlands Project, where we actually changed an old farm, which is a county drain, but with an old farm drain, we changed that area to create a wetland to hold water. But I don't know that we've had a project like that, seems like we were having them every 10 years, and we haven't had one in a while. Do you know, is the Alliance of Rouge Communities still involved in those kind of projects? Are they doing those? What does a township need to do to get another one of those projects in at some of the property we have alongside drains?
I shared your thought, I haven't heard anything recently, but certainly explored doing it. I, I, you probably, I think I talked to you somewhat facetiously, but not necessarily, across from Bar Road, across from Grandview's, a large cornfield. And that's where water was sheeting out that.
Yeah.
Way that, that sort of township, along with partners, get involved, is that a place where we want to hold water? Farm anymore, or farm, but then with the flood, it floods, so I'm not serious we do that, but those are the kind of things we got to be creative about.
Yeah, I, I saw Oakland County had a, they have a $2,000 individual homeowner grant program, where they will reimburse you up to $2,000 if you put in rain gardens. Now, that's not going to solve the flooding on the, it's not going to be the only thing that stops flooding on Fellows, but when you have 14,500 homes that are feed into Fellows at participation of 2% of the homeowners, putting, holding and retaining a couple hundred gallons of water each, you start getting to thousands of gallons. Does start impacting that.
Rain gardens, also, they, they also bring attention of what, how water, water's a challenge for us. Climate change, whatever, but one of the things that anticipates, we're going to get more floods, more waters.
Yeah, I don't see this situation getting better.
No, it's not. And I think, when you talk about rain gardens, yes, somebody may, but I think it's the philosophy that we have to be thinking about this all the time, when we do develop, when we do things on our own property. People want to keep putting poor concrete, or impervious surfaces, whatever they look like. It has consequences.
Right, I want to mow up to the creek.
Yeah.
I want to blame the development next door from me for the flooding on my property. Don't want to retain the wa, I mean, it's like, it's got to be an all-hands-on-deck to solve the issue.
Yes, there's no, we're not going to have, they're good, but they're not going to give us one solution, like, you do this and it's solved by your foot. It's not going to happen.
Right.
It's not going to happen.
Like you said, so not only looking at adding more detention ponds and cleaning up the ponds that we have, but also asking Wayne County, you know, maintenance. Now, they're, you know, saying things like they need more funds for it, but they also gave us a map of what they're responsible for, what they're not, so there's a lot of things we have to talk about with Wayne County.
Some of it makes sense, some of those maps did make sense, so.
Yeah, right. Is there an enforcement mechanism? Could the township pass an ordinance requiring ponds being maintained, the detention and retention ponds?
Yes.
We have that ability?
We could do that. I'm not suggesting we do that. I think we, we need to be more about, do we provide some type of inspection process, you know, ever that we can involve in finding how they work. I don't have anything fully developed yet, but those are the things that. John, tell me something about DPW, because some of the education works, you know, we get called out, but a lot more than just five ponds.
We have said the Frank Mities that are blocking a lot of areas also, the drain areas.
Man, I mean, one of the issues we have to kind of sort out with our current detention ponds and stormwater management that exists in subdivisions and businesses and other developments throughout the township is, who's responsible for maintaining those ponds? Some of them are orphans, some of them are part of developments that are owned by the developer while the land's being developed, and then once the developer's out, the HOA might take responsibility for it, or might not take responsibility for it. And then the question becomes, who maintains those ponds? So, that's one of the questions that we have to answer. Now, there are many ponds that are under the control of homeowners associations or other groups that took over that maintenance after the development was completed, but that's not the case everywhere in the township.
Answered your question, my buddy. More, the more that we have to talk about.
This is not a one-size-fits-everything, you know, this is, like, Dave said, this is a watershed, and this, there's a balancing act, and we're going to try what we can and figure out what we can, but this is a continual discussion, and we do have to bring the county to the table with this.
What happened in the Salem Township with, you know, where they want to put that, the turnout there was very encouraging.
Yes, there were like 500 people there.
And it wasn't, don't develop here, it's just, we're all connected, this thing, and we got to figure this out.
I would just say that I'm looking forward to seeing the results of this work. I would be interested some, some point to hear recommendations on things that could be built, but as long as it, us pushing off that decision doesn't preclude us from adding it in later, I'm fine with, you know, not paying for that, just seeing what we get right now. You don't have to bring it back up, but what were the neon green lines on every creek?
So, typically, when you construct a model, so now we have, let me go back, go to the side a little bit. So, I don't know if anyone has heard of like LIDAR, which is the ground surface that has now been flown by airplane and is available for the entire state. So, the state did that, that's the ground surface. LIDAR does not penetrate water, so we need to send an actual physical survey crew out to take measurements of the channel bed below the water. And then what we do is, we combine all of that data below the water with the overbank and the land surface into what we call a terrain. So, you have, you can go across, land the channel, come back up, and go out to land again. So, that was what those green lines were, is typically just how we represent where we're going to get below-water survey.
I see.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with what Stephen said. I'm thankful that you are here tonight. I think the, the information that we're going to get from this is going to be really interesting and, and helpful, and, yeah, we'll see where we go from there.
Yeah, yeah, so this will take probably two years for them to do this, but I think, Dave, you suggested you're working in this short term with other ideas.
Yeah, we can't just wait.
Yeah, so I'm glad that we are being very proactive about this, because, you know, when this happened last August, people said what went wrong, and we are just trying to find out what has happened and how we can, because, you know, this, these are 60-year-old infrastructure that we are dealing, 60, 70-year-old infrastructure.
Natural infrastructure, yeah.
Yeah, and then there has been so much development on top of that.
I agree with everything that's been said. I think one of the things that I'm noticing is that we pay attention to the infrastructure that's right in front of us. So, everyone pays attention to the roads and the bridges, and there are not enough people paying attention to what's going on underground until something like a 100-year flood or once, I don't know, five-year flood happens, but we need more investment to figure out what the problem is, and we need more people at the table, and I'm grateful that we're able to bring in Army Corps of Engineers, but we got to get the county to the table. We have to work with our partners at the state and federal government to bring more resources to pay attention to what people don't see every day.
Right, that makes sense. Anyone else? The next steps are, you've written up a scope of work, and so we determine how we do our part, whether it's that we do surveys, or we hire, like, we trim to come in and do their part. So, there's several options we can do to pay our part of it, to help out with this, what you're doing.
So, timing, I think, is, sounds important to everybody. We can get the survey down pretty quick, once we have a signed agreement and we have funding. You guys are welcome to do any part of the 50%. I'm not touching it. So, yeah, we can make that decision whenever, but whatever portion we can.
Any recommendations by the board that you're thinking that we should do? I mean, Dave, also, what would you like to see, you know, based on the work that, you know, we've been meeting for?
Well, I am interested in getting our consultant involved, because I think they'll be helpful with other things that we want to do too. I still have a number yet to put to this. I should have one soon.
Okay, so we'll have that number, and then we can sign, if the board agrees, we'd bring an RBA before everybody, you know, with the cost and the proposal.
Definitely.
All right, well, thank you very much for your presentation. More to come, this is not done. We have a lot, long way to go, but at least we're opening the cracks. All right, now it's time for public comment. Does anyone want to do public comment?
Good evening, Dan McCoslin.
43-year resident. You know, you can deny all this you want, this is a total lack of maintenance by the county. What happens is sediment comes off the roads, goes into basins, goes into catch basins, goes into culverts, a 24-inch culvert becomes a 6-inch culvert, becomes a 3-inch culvert, becomes a 0-inch culvert. The county does not do their job. You can sit here and sit here and deny and cover for them all you want, but the people of this community are sick of it, because it's a total lack of maintenance. We do no maintenance. We're going to spend money and talk about drawings and drawings and drawings and more drawings and studies and studies and studies, but let's face it, ladies and gentlemen, it's a lack of maintenance. If you don't maintain something, it goes in total disrepair, and that's what we have currently. We have a total disrepair. The county was taking money from us for drain maintenance. Where's the money? They're giving it back to you at Cherry Hill Village. To buy your silence, that's what's happening. Let's face it, they're buying your silence off for the downtown Cherry Hill Village. So, you don't want to bring them to the table and tell them, look, it's the drains. So, what's it going to be? The Cherry Hill Village or the drains? I think most people, after their insurance is going to be gone for the next two years with a flooded-out home, are going to want the water to go away before they're going to want Cherry Hill Village. So, that's the bottom line there. Till the powers that be bring the people-to-be to this room, to this table, and come up with a viable plan, you can study all you want. The water's not going anywhere. Second of all, that web study, that's outdated technology. There's more, there's more, there's better technology than that. You're going to still need Zoom, and you're going to all the, you know, come on, we can do better than this. Until you want to start doing better, we're, we're just spending money. We're spending money and spending money and studies and studies and studies and studies, and it's going to be like all the other projects. It's going to be two years, then it's going to be four years. In the meantime, buy canoes.
Robert McCoslin, 2011 Lath Road. I don't want to be repetitious about anything, but I've been coming to this podium and talking about regional water detention for 25 years, and nothing's ever been done. You know, we missed the chance, we missed the chance when 275 got rebuilt. We missed the chance. We got, we got promise for projects on the side of 275, which with a enhanced water feature, like you, when you do the study, you'll see, could really make a nice development. Why don't we put our heads together on this and get it done? We can't put the cart before the horse. I mean, I, I know your job, and you want to know what you have, but like my brother just said, it, it's due to a lack of maintenance. I live to the north of this, and my property ends at the end of it, okay? And I've suffered through it for the last 35 years. Every time it rains, it floods. And the only reason it floods, because the trees are down, and there's a lack of maintenance, and it's never been maintained. Nobody wants to do that job. It's a tough job. It's got to be subbed down to professionals, like Dave said. You probably don't have three guys on a, a crew that could do that job every day, or the equipment. That needs to be best-of-breed, that needs to be a Davy, Ashblin, somebody like that, come in, be accountable, know the job, do the job, we get the money's worth, not, you know, oh, well, we'll pay half. Come on, we're paying half, we're paying it all right now, and we're still not getting nothing, so what's half going to get us? I appreciate you guys coming out, but I, I think what we need to do is, instead of, instead of the studies, look at the water course, and like I said, I've been on it for 35 years. People in the area that know it will tell you the problem areas, and we can get it fixed, it's just hard work. Thank you.
Comments from the staff? Board? Like you said, we're bringing the county to the table, we're going to be speaking to them soon, and we are going to look at some of the detention ponds that we have and see what we can do immediately. That was said several times.
Still moved to support?
Motion made by Tanya, supported by Summer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.